Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Ryan Singer, who is the Department of City Planning's Senior Director of Landuse and Commission Operations, will now outline some general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate.
Good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage Portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing will be emailed to you after you have completed the registration process. If you are accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at 1-877-853-5247. This is US toll-free. The meeting ID is 740-153-9378. Press pound to skip the participation ID and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please note that your testimony will be oral only. The commissioners will hear you, but we can't see you yet. When it's your turn to speak, you will be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff. So please listen closely for your name to be called. If you are accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself and you should see a notice on your screen allowing you to unmute your microphone. If you are accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. When your testimony is complete or your three minutes have expired, you must press star six again to mute yourself. Please note that muting and unmuting registered speakers may take a moment as we are adjusting to this new hearing format, so thank you for your patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide that they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago and that is on the screen now. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. You will be notified when you can unmute your microphone to speak. Please classify your testimony as in favor or in opposition and indicate if you are speaking on behalf of another person or a group. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into the microphone. There are few exceptions to the three-minute limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you are watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning mailing an email address, which can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, I would ask Madam Secretary to please begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, August 19, 2020. I will now call the role. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Sirulo.
Yeah.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Capelli is here.
Okay.
Capelli is here.
Okay. Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
Equorum is present.
I just want to make sure you're also noted that Commissioner De La Ous is here.
Yes, I have heard. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, March 4, 2020, and special public meeting of Monday, March 16, 2020.
The minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one and five through eight, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, September 2, 2020, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal. Calendar numbers two through four have been laid over.
On the resolutions. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 10. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number nine, CD8C200106HAK. In the matter of an application for a U-DAP designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Wixville NCP at Prospect Place. For a favorable report on calendar number nine, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number nine. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 10, CD4C200188HAK. In the matter of an application for a U-DAP designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Old Stanley 641 Chauncey Street. For a favorable report on calendar number 10, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous. I'm sorry, Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yeah.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 10. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 11 and 12. Calendar number 11, CD12C190377ZMK. Calendar number 12, N190378ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning 5914 Bay Parkway rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 11 and 12. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioners Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
I'm voting yes on this one, but I do think that the workforce option is not the best choice for this neighborhood. I think it really would amount to market rate housing. Option one for rural housing would seem to better suit the AMIs in that neighborhood, but I hope that's an adjustment that the city council may make. I vote yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 11 and 12. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 13 through 16. Calendar number 13, CD7C190296ZMK. Calendar number 14, C190297ZSK. Calendar number 15, N190298ZRK. Calendar number 16, C160146MMK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning, excuse me, zoning map, city map and zoning tax amendments and a special permit concerning industry city. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 13 through 16. Chair Lago.
I'd like to make a few remarks to express why I am so pleased to vote in support of the Industry City proposal and the thousands of jobs that it will bring to the vibrant historic community of Sunset Park. A community that has been proudly defined over the centuries by the immigrants who have called it home. It's fortuitous that the first major project to be voted on by the City Planning Commission since COVID-19 shut down our economy is focused on job creation. One of my first jobs as a civil servant was for the Department of City Planning during the Koch administration in 1983. The city was in dire fiscal straits as it tried to recover from the eight consecutive years of job losses in the 1970s, the longest on record. This had resulted in 610,000 fewer New York City jobs. Compare this to 2020. Since March of this year, the city has lost 777,000 jobs. That's nearly all of what we gained in the strong economic expansion of the last decade. In 1976, a bleak time in the city, average unemployment reached 10.2%. Fast forward to June 2019, unemployment was at 4%, but in June of this year, it stood at over 20%, five times that of last year and doubled that of 1976. Historically, the residents of our city's lower-income communities and our Black, Indigenous and people of color communities are the hardest hit by economic shocks and they have for too long been left to fend for themselves. I believe that the Industry City proposal can help us to stop this cycle of neglect and inequity and help us to right a historical wrong. With these communities and these families front of mind, I remember the lesson that I first learned from then-City Planning Commission Chairman Herb Sterbs in the early 1980s. City government, in partnership with communities and the private sector, must never take its foot off the pedal of economic development. We must double down and create good jobs for New Yorkers at all skill levels and near where they live. In today's world, our focus has to be on essential workers, the people who live in Sunset Park and other neighborhoods outside of the Manhattan core, and the families and small businesses who are hardest hit by the economic flatline of COVID-19 to say nothing of its deadly toll. New York City's industrial waterfront is a unique and important asset. The city has made tremendous investments into the large publicly-owned sites along the Sunset Park waterfront. The city has spent and is continuing to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on upgrading space for good manufacturing jobs at the city-owned Brooklyn Army Terminal, improving our freight rail network in the neighborhood, creating new waterfront open spaces, investing in the Maiden New York campus, and working with New York State to bring a wind power assembly hub to the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal. And just last week, the City's Economic Development Corporation announced that Steiner Studios will expand to Sunset Park's publicly-owned Bush Terminal, bringing an estimated 1,600 construction jobs and 2,200 new permanent jobs. The work to revitalize Brooklyn's waterfront has been and will continue to be done in close partnership with local communities and their elected officials. It's based on the extensive thoughtful work that Community Board Seven and local organizations have put into planning and this planning and investment is happening with climate resiliency at the forefront in ensuring that these job centers are thriving through at least 2,100. Industry in New York City is undeniably evolving. It's smaller, it's more high-tech, and its jobs afford a talented local workforce with a direct pathway to good-paying jobs. COVID-19 has brought into sharp focus the need for stable, locally-accessible jobs at a variety of skill levels. It also highlighted that our city's growing reliance, it also highlighted our city's growing reliance on large last-mile distribution centers. We know that for a city to function, we need both warehousing space and space for job-dense uses close to where New Yorkers live. And the Industry City proposal can provide both, without public subsidies or public investment in this underutilized privately-owned 30-acre facility, but only if we update our long-outdated zoning. While zoning does not and should not dictate the specific type of jobs that a private business can create or set wages or require certain types of hiring practices, zoning can create a framework for small business growth and expansion by allowing the zoning flexibility for what we know and what COVID-19 has so starkly demonstrated is a challenging and ever-changing future in our city. And with that, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles. Hello.
Vice Chairman Knuckles. Thank you. Whether today, in the face of a global pandemic or six months ago, the Industry City proposal that we are considering today brings huge opportunity and huge benefits to our city and to the Sunset Park community. Particularly because of COVID-19, I am pleased that the City Planning Commission is voting on this project today and I believe it should be forwarded to the New York City Council and hopefully continue a healthy public debate on the future of Industry City and jobs in our community. I believe that the applicant has been engaged and responsive to the community and that they have proven to be good neighbors, including during the pandemic. I also believe that significant community benefits promised by the developer, including robust workforce development programs, must be ironclad and enforceable. Community and economic development are not zero-sum gains. They must come hand in hand. And while I believe that many of the community act and Industry City's commitments are beyond the scope of this particular zoning proposal, that in no way diminishes their importance. As was mentioned earlier, since March, New York City has lost close to 800,000 jobs. That is an astounding number and in this regard, we are facing challenges today that surpass both the Great Recession of 2008 and '09 as well as the aftermath of 9/11. With these considerations in mind, I think I'd be remiss if I did not vote to advance a project which promises 15,000 jobs as well as job training programs for high school and CUNY students. With the focus of job creation at Industry City around manufacturing, including advanced light manufacturing and food production, as well as retail and incubator space, Industry City can and must be a place for small businesses to start, flourish, and hire locally. For these reasons, among others, I support this proposal and I vote yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
I should explain, I'm going to no on this application. Even though I've long been a supporter and fan of Industry City, it's a private application from a successful business and they've done a lot in the past to support light manufacturing and workforce development. And I can understand that these are probably not the most profitable ventures for a private company and I can see the appeal of hotels and retail businesses that will bring in far greater profits. But this is a manufacturing zone. It's a diminishing resource for the city that really badly needs the good work that Industry City has done in the past. And there have been concerns expressed by the local community, by the borough president and the council member, that the addition of 287,000 square feet of hotel and 900,000 square feet of retail would have a negative impact on local small businesses and really, you know, sort of turn Industry City into a Jamestown shopping mall. And is that really what we would want to see? And I was happy to see that the applicant actually did address some of those concerns by agreeing to eliminate the hotels and to significantly reduce the amount of retail that they were requesting. But now we see that the applicant is actually not agreeing to this or to any of the other accommodations for the community, at least not as part of the review process under this commission, preferring to take their case to the city council, where there's now heavy lobbying to reduce the influence of the local council members. So to me, this just diminishes the role of the community review process. It sidesteps the work of the community board and the local elected officials who represent that community. And I understand the applicant has the right to do this if the commission so votes, but they will do so without my vote. And I vote no.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes. I'm very pleased to vote yes on this proposal. I believe that this is in the best interest of the community as well as in the best interests of the city as a whole. As a Staten Islander, or somebody who's been raised in Staten Island, anyway, I've been connected to Industry City by the BQE and the Barazano Bridge and have watched it for over 50 years go through a number of changes, many of which in the beginning were not for the betterment. And in recent years, Industry City has proven itself to be a good neighbor and a very positive influence on the community. I associate myself with the remarks of the chair and the vice chair as to the benefits. I would only add, as I said at the review session and I've said in the past at the public hearings, that I think that the city council and the developer want not to delete the hotel component from it. I believe it's very important to the success of it as an economic engine that will provide tremendous opportunity both for local residents and residents of the city and the region. And again, I'm pleased to lend my support. Thank you.
Commissioner Sirulo.
I'd like to associate myself with the affirmative comments of my colleagues and vote yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
I'm recused on this matter. And I just also want to say, I want to associate myself with the comments that Commissioner Levin made on the Bay Parkway rezoning. Unfortunately, my microphone went out at that particular moment where I wanted to say something about the MIH on that application. Sorry, I can't comment on this.
Okay. Commissioner Dweck.
Yes, so if not to be redundant, I'd like to associate myself with the comments of the chair and the vice chair and my fellow commissioners, including Commissioner Bernie, who was in opposition. Nevertheless, in light of the current economic circumstances and environment, I vote yes and I hope that the city council will modify it more in line to what the borough president's comments refer to. So with that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Edie.
You're on mute.
Commissioner Edie, you're on mute.
How's that?
Better.
Better. Thank you. In recent decades, many projects have been able to advance due to parties being able to work together and find areas of agreement. This has enabled New York to grow, jobs to be created, and New Yorkers to prosper. And in most cases, the final project was better for having gone through the public review process. This project is no different and I hope that parties find a way to approve this so that New Yorkers can continue to prosper, especially during these challenging times. And I'm pleased to vote yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Knight.
Commissioner Knight. Yes. I would like to associate my remarks with the affirmative comments of the chair, vice chair, and my fellow commissioners and would like to also emphasize the more urgent need for the flexibility in this proposal at this time in order for the project to deliver the economic development objectives to the community and the region. And I vote yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Commissioner Marin.
I should like to associate my comments, myself with all the comments made. I do agree that there are both positives and negatives to this proposal. I will say that I do believe the hotel needs to exist in order for this proposal to be successful. There are many, many organizations that are finding it hard to find space in the city, specifically today as a result of COVID, to operate. I will say that I would have preferred, I know this is not what was proposed, but I would have preferred the city keep the asset and have a manager manage the asset for the city of New York, but that was not what was proposed to us. It is imperative that local hiring be a major, major concentration for this application and that the community be afforded first opportunity to be able to work at the available employment opportunities that are made. With that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. I also would like to associate my comments with the chair and the vice chair. This location really has the opportunity to become an economic generator for the city. But I do encourage the developer to make ironclad their commitments through a community benefits agreement and also agree with Commissioner Bernie that the deals that occurred outside of this process and that are not subject to our vote, you know, are rather frustrating. I would add that, you know, I was very supportive of the hotel component. I think it's an important piece of the puzzle in getting, you know, this destination for manufacturing businesses, right?
Is she done? Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes, I would also like to associate myself with the comments made by the chair.
That entry is increasing the international, any other places today, and I think it was short-sighted.
Did I give you the loft of a microphone on Commissioner Ortiz?
Hi, I'm back. Can you hear me? Yes. I'm not sure where I got cut off, but I was simply saying that I think that community benefits agreement should really be made ironclad and I am frustrated, as Commissioner Bernie mentioned, about the deals that occurred outside of this process that aren't subject to our vote. I would like the hotel component to remain. I think it's an important puzzle, piece of the puzzle. Manufacturing businesses are increasingly international. They welcome customers and partners from all over the globe. And it's really imperative that we make sure that this location is competitive with other regions and districts like this that do have convenient, safe, high-quality hotel rooms. And so I think it was short-sighted to remove that from the proposal. With that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes, I would like to associate myself with the comments made by the chair and the vice chair. And I also share the concerns raised by Commissioner Bernie and Ortiz. But in light of these challenging times, I believe that this will create an opportunity that will benefit the community, so I'm going to vote yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 13 through 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 17, CD3C20077ZSM. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 3 Cent Marks Place. For a favorable report on calendar number 17, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Delaussis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number seventeen. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number eighteen, CD three, N two one zero zero two zero HIM. In a matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of the Bet Hamid Rash Hagadul synagogue. On the adoption of calendar number eighteen for a referral to the city council, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Delaussis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz? Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Calendar number eighteen has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Calendar number nineteen, CD two, N two zero zero one three nine ZAR. Calendar number twenty, N two zero zero one five four ZAR. Calendar number twenty-one, N two zero zero two six one ZAR. In a matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning eighty-seven Circle Road. For adoption on calendar numbers nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, Chair Lago. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Delaussis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
I did call him. Rampachet. Calendar numbers nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers twenty-two through thirty-two. Calendar number twenty-two, N two zero zero two three five RCR concerning two fifty Crunk Avenue. Calendar number twenty-three, CD one, N two zero zero three zero eight ZCR concerning six hundred Metropolitan Avenue. Calendar number twenty-four, CD three, N two zero zero two six six RCR concerning eighty-six Ridgecrest Avenue, Hill six Hilltop Road. Calendar number twenty-five, N two zero zero two nine zero RCR concerning Manhattan Street. Calendar number twenty-six, N one nine zero four one five RCR concerning seven eighteen Bloomingdale Road. Calendar number twenty-seven, CD two, N two zero zero two six four RCR concerning three sixty-one Ocean Terrace. Calendar number twenty-eight, N two zero zero two six five RCR concerning one thirty-five and one forty-five Cromwell Circle. Calendar number twenty-nine, CD three, N two zero zero two four five RCR concerning two seventeen and two nineteen Vineland Avenue. Calendar number thirty, N two zero zero two four two ZCR concerning Eugene Street and Amboy Road. Calendar number thirty-one, CD one, N two one triple zero nine ZCR concerning five fifty-one Richmond Road. Calendar number thirty-two, CD three, N two zero zero two nine four RCR concerning three thirty-six fifty-one Richmond Avenue. In a matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar numbers twenty-two through thirty-two. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Delaussis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin? Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Calendar numbers twenty-two through thirty-two have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page thirty-eight. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers thirty-three through thirty-six. Calendar number thirty-three, CD sixteen, N two triple zero eight two ZRK. Calendar number thirty-four, C two triple zero eight three PQK. Calendar number thirty-five, C two triple zero eight four HAK. Calendar number thirty-six, C two triple zero eight five CMK. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments, acquisition of property, U-Dub designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property concerning fifteen ten Broadway.
Before we begin this public meeting, I would like to start by explaining some things that are the same and a few things that are different. What is the same is that we will ask speakers generally to limit their testimony to three minutes. As was explained at the beginning, there are some exceptions. Elected officials are both able to jump the queue but also to speak without a time limit. Persons who are speaking through translators will have two additional minutes of time added. And for teams making a presentation, for applicant teams making presentations of at least three minutes, they will generally be accorded ten minutes to make their presentation. Another thing that will be the same is that the commission will be listening intently and looking forward to hearing the testimony and would ask that those testifying make themselves available for questioning by the commission. Unfortunately, due to the limitations of technology at this point, the commission will not be able to see those testifying. We hope that technology will quickly catch up with us. And so with that, I will now turn this over to a ten-minute presentation by an applicant team that is comprised of Lynn Zhang, Erin Buchanan, Stacy Wong, Ron Schulman, Bill Wilkins, Joseph Apicella, Sandra Malanowicz, Brelia Fogliano, Fogliano, oh, excuse me, William Wilkins, and Lisa Schreidman. Also available for questions is Munson Park. Madam Secretary, please let the team know when your time begins.
Okay. Your time has begun.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lynn Zhang, represent Department of Housing Preservation Development. I'm joined here today by Erin Buchanan, Ozzie from HPD, and members of development team for this presentation. Also with me today are colleagues from the Department of Citywide Ministry of Services and the Metropolitan Transit Authority, who will be available for any questions at the end. On the screen is a list of the requested land use actions presented and discussed in Monday's review session. HPD and DCAST are the applicants, and the application was certified December second, 2019. The site was designated to the Queston Development under HPD's MWV RFP, supporting the city's efforts to build capacity with minority and women-owned businesses. Next slide, please. This is an arrow view of the subject vacant city-owned sites on block fourteen eighty-nine, lot eleven, located within Brooklyn Community District sixteen. The surrounding area includes a variety of building types from low-scale one- and two-family homes to the higher-scale thirteen- and sixteen-story NYCHA buildings nearby. Further, the site runs Broadway, characterized by local commercial and retail stores, and it's adjacent to the J Halsey Street subway station and the elevated JZ subway line that also runs along Broadway. Next slide, please. And here is a project overview of the proposed development. Approval of the proposed actions will facilitate the development of approximately one hundred and seven units of affordable housing serving low-income families and individuals. It will include ground floor commercial space that will activate a portion of Broadway that has long been overshadowed by the elevated subway and vacant city-owned land. Approval of this project also paves the way for new building that has been designed to include space reserved for future ADA improvements to the adjacent MTA subway station. And without taking up more time, I will now turn the presentation over to Stacy Wong of Glove Plus to provide more detail, overview of the building design and program.
Great. Thanks a lot, Lynn. Next slide. Development is approximately one hundred and sixteen thousand gross square feet or ninety-eight thousand zoning square feet with eight floors above grade and a partial cellar. The trapezoidal-shaped development site is bordered by Broadway and the elevated J train located along the top of the page, Jefferson and Saratoga, Saratoga Avenue is to the left and Hancock Street to the right. The site is well-served by transit with the Q twenty-four and B seven bus stops in front of the site as well as city bikes across the street. The unit mix for the one hundred and eight apartments is comprised of seven percent studios, forty-four percent one bedrooms, with remaining forty-eight percent being two and three bedrooms to provide family-sized affordable units for the neighborhood. Next slide. Next slide. This ground floor plan has added color to better illustrate the allocation of space. In blue is approximately ten thousand square feet of commercial floor area located exclusively along Broadway. And this floor area includes approximately seven hundred square feet set aside for local arts and cultural nonprofit organizations. The blue arrows indicate the multiple possible entries to these spaces, which is critical to reinforcing Broadway as the retail and transit corridor for the neighborhood. In purple is an off-street loading berth serving the commercial floor area, access mid-block on Hancock Street as far from the street intersection as possible. And the remainder of the ground floor in yellow is allocated to the residential floor area, including two residential lobbies, accessory spaces such as an indoor resident bike room, and six affordable housing units. And the red arrows indicate residential entries at the corners of the site. For better quality units, for those living on the ground floor, the housing units are concentrated along Hancock and Saratoga to remove them as far as possible from the elevated train's infrastructure. The residential street wall on the ground floor is set back from the property line and will be planted to provide further buffer for the ground floor apartments. And then the small gray square on the plan facing Broadway is an approximately thirteen-foot by thirteen-foot space for a future MTA elevator to access the adjacent Halsey Street station platform. This space will be concealed behind the building facade and inaccessible until such time an elevator can be constructed. No parking is required for the commercial space nor for affordable units in a transit zone, and none is provided. Next slide, please. This view is from Broadway. The design incorporates a building setback after the ground floor to provide maximum distance between the elevated train and the residential units on second through eighth floors. The goal was to maximize daylight and views for every apartment and to avoid apartments directly overlooking that subway platform. This setback allows for an outdoor courtyard amenity for all residents, which is at the heart of the building. At approximately seven thousand square feet, the courtyard will include landscaping, pavers, seating, and a children's area. And the indoor resident recreation room and common laundry room are centrally located adjacent to the courtyard. This building setback has the added benefit of being visible and distinctive when walking along Broadway, allowing daylight to come down to sidewalk level and creating a unique sense of place on the city block. The ground floor design incorporates large expanses of glass approximately eleven feet high, light-colored groundface masonry, and a darker-toned signage band and mullions to provide transparency, visual variety, and contrast. There are dark-skY compliant light fixtures located on the masonry panels for both a safer pedestrian experience as well as visual interest on the building facade in the evening. And the multiple commercial entry points, as well as the signage band along the length of the building, allows for retail space that is open, visible, flexible, and viable for a variety of commercial tenants. Next slide, please. This is a view of Hancock Street. You can see the residential entry and lobby are located at the corner. The loading dock entrance is at the far left of the building as far from the street intersection as possible, which helps maintain an uninterrupted residential street wall. And the ground floor apartments are all buffered with plantings in the street wall setback. Next slide, please. And this is a view from Saratoga Avenue, which is very similar to Hancock Street. The overall building expression is inspired by the neighborhood context. Although there is a sixteen-story NYCHA residential tower across the street, which you can see at the far right of this image, the neighborhood fabric is actually predominantly three- and four-story townhomes in multiple colors. Our project used the neighborhood's townhome fabric as inspiration and articulated the building massing and facade material treatment to reference the vertical proportions of a townhome module. Each townhome is clad in a different tone of white and gray, with the exception of a few townhomes clad in a brighter color. Next slide, please. And the development will pursue enterprise green community certification and LEED certification for new construction. The sustainable features are listed here, and I won't go through all of them due to time, but in particular, I do want to highlight the stormwater control measures that include the green roof areas in the landscape courtyard, as well as rain gardens at new street trees and in the planting beds running along the ground floor residential street wall. And I will turn the presentation over now to Ron Schulman to discuss rents and income.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Schulman, Best Development Group. We are the affordable housing consultant for Queston Development. The project will be a one hundred and eight-unit ELLA finance project with HPD and HDC. As Stacy just said, there's a hundred and eight units. Approximately forty-eight percent of those units are two bedrooms. Under the ELLA program, we'll have rents ranging from twenty-seven percent to seventy-seven percent. There will be a fifteen percent set aside for formerly homeless people. We'll have a one, two-bedroom apartment for resident superintendent. And we are also financing the commercial, ground floor commercial in the ELLA financing. The project will be affordable for sixty years because we'll be pursuing a sixty-year 420(c)(2) tax exemption and also an ICAP tax exemption for the retail space on the ground floor. As Stacy said, there's no parking, but there's also, we are offering a seven hundred square foot community facility space for the community.
Next slide, please. Sorry, Ron. Just wanted to the next slide.
Sorry. And, okay, we just talked about the ELLA program, so you can see the incomes of the rent ranges, basically housing for all different types of families and structures of households, ranging from roughly seventeen to eighty-eight thousand, which is a wide range. And we are, have fifty percent of the units at or below fifty percent of AMI. So with that, I'll let the rest of the group continue with the presentation. We'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Next slide, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Wilkins. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Housing for the Local Development Corporation, East New York. We have served the East Brooklyn community for over forty years. For the last twenty years, every day I come to work to grow businesses, change lives, and strengthen communities. I feel this project is a regenerative project, and to the greatest extent possible, we're going to use as many local assets as possible in the building.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that the time has expired. So I will now turn it over to Commissioners who, for any questions that they might have. I see that Vice Chair Knuckles has a question.
Thank you. It may have been Commissioner
It may have been Commissioner Bernie, uh, during our review session that, that, that raised the question, which I agree with, uh, around the treatment of the windows, uh, acoustic treatment of the windows, given the, uh, close proximity of the, um, of the project to the, uh, to the subway system. Uh, can the development team address that question?
Uh, this is Stacy Wong with GLUT Plus. I can, I can address that question. So the EAS for, um, the site, um, uh, did analyze the, um, the noise, uh, for the site, and there were recommendations, um, in the EAS for what, um, uh, acoustic treatment we would need to provide, uh, for both, um, the solid portion of, um, the building wall as well as all of the windows and openings, um, in the building facade. And so they did outline, um, uh, the facades facing the street requiring a thirty, uh, addressing a thirty-three DBA, um, sound requirement, and then the facades that are facing Hancock and Saratoga, uh, slightly less stringent at thirty-one. And so, um, the, uh, we have done projects before where we had to address a sound attenuation in the facade and in the windows. Uh, the windows, um, we, uh, are specifying windows that have certain OITC ratings as well as, um, our P-Tech lubers having, um, certain OITC sound attenuation packages in order to, um, meet the requirements that are outlined in the EAS.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Deloos.
Uh, good morning. Thanks for the presentation, um, and congratulations on selection, uh, to redevelop the site. Um, uh, the, two questions. Um, one is if you could finish the presentation on the MWBE hiring plans, um, and also the outreach to the local residents, that would be helpful. Uh, and the other is, um, you know, given, uh, you know, obviously Broadway's a very important commercial corridor, um, you guys are setting aside, I think it was ten thousand uh, square feet. I'm just wondering if, if in the future, uh, you determine that that much retail square footage is not needed or is not viable, um, are, are there other alternative uses for square footage, um, that the development team has considered?
Well, um, I'll address the, your first question, and thank you for allowing me an opportunity to continue. Um, as it relates to MWBE being a, a, an economic development organization, one of our benchmarks are to certify at least twelve MWBE companies a year. We already have an established database of MWBE companies that are in the buildings trade, and also to the west of the project, um, to the east of the project site is the East Brooklyn Business Improvement District, of which I am the East Brooklyn Bid Manager. And we have a plethora of companies in the buildings trade. So taking this regenerative process a step forward, we look to bring these assets into the envelope, and that way we can help to change the, the narrative of, um, East Brooklyn and also where the project site is located. Additionally, as, as you're well aware, as is mentioned on other projects, we suffer from high unemployment. So from a workforce development standpoint, we look to try to employ as many individuals locally as possible.
Can someone speak about the, um, commercial square footage and in the event that ten thousand square feet is not needed or viable?
Sure. This is Joseph Apicella, Managing Director with the Development Team, McQueston Development. Uh, while we have a comprehensive network of, uh, retail recruiters and marketing people, including the aforementioned Bill Wilkins, who is on the ground for us, if all efforts were to fail, uh, we believe that on a traditional retail basis, we believe that the need in this era of COVID and the like and economic distress, uh, there is a strong need for daycare, enhanced daycare facilities, uh, in this area and various, uh, government agencies that support daycare birthing centers and the like, um, so that alternatively, Commissioner, we're looking at that as a real possibility. We've already included a community and arts component here, and we're looking comprehensively and holistically at what we can do in a worst-case scenario if traditional retail fails. So we think that the daycare and child support, um, concept is something that is much needed and will be expanding over time.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe. Hi. Um, along those lines, um, uh, you know, what, what are your practices around, um, addressing vacant storefronts and, you know, when a space is vacant and as you're trying to lease it, um, what are the conditions of that space and what will be sort of the experience of the pedestrian as they walk by the vacancy?
You know, we, we've dealt with mixed-use projects, Commissioner, for many, many years over the last, I've been involved twenty-five years, and, you know, the economy is, as the Chair indicated, ebbs and flows. So what we've been able to do is be creative in the event of a, a vacancy, because you don't want that, from a planning perspective, that storefront to look dark or closed. So we've done a number of things, including having competition for, uh, very interesting murals and the like, uh, that could really enliven and create a sense of place until such time as you, you have a real tenant there. I think lighting is, is very, very important, and we would address that. But I think, uh, getting the community involved, and again, I'd look to our community partner in this, uh, Bill Wilkins and the, uh, non-for-profit of the LDC of East New York to work with us on do, doing what we've done before, which is a competitive arts mural, um, in that window space and to make it interesting and yet not, of course, intrusive in any way. That's one idea.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think that's really quite important, and I think we probably anticipate, you know, a, a longer time to lease up, um, and so a, a commitment or a clear strategy, um, to address the vacancy. I, I, I love that idea, but, you know, in the form of a commitment or, or, um, you know, an indication in our report would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Bernie.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate a comment I made at the review session about the colors on the facade. I'm not quite sure what the facade material is, but, um, my concern about the colors, and it, and it might seem trivial, but what I've noticed with these is that the colors, while they look sort of fashionable on day one, end up being quite tawdry after a while when they begin to fade. And I know this isn't the final design, so I would just encourage the architects to look at the more muted palette when they, uh, when they finish the facade design.
Any other questions from the Commission? And I'll thank the applicant team, and we will now move on to public comment. And again, I'd like to highlight two things that have not changed even in our virtual world. One is first that one must register if you wish to speak, whether over the telephone or the, over, um, NYC Engage, the online portal. The other thing that will remain the same is that we will, um, follow our practice of starting with five speakers in opposition and then moving to five speakers in support and go back and forth until all who have registered have, are, um, have been heard from. Um, we currently have one speaker who has registered to speak in opposition, but, um, Brian, if I could ask if you could, again, go through the description of how one could register. Um, this is in lieu of my, when we met in person, calling out to ask if there was anyone currently unregistered who was interested in speaking.
Absolutely. Um, so if you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meeting page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing will be emailed to you after you have completed the registration process. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, uh, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at, um, sorry, I lost my, at, uh, one eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven, US toll-free. And the, um, meeting ID is seven four zero, uh, one five three. I believe that there is a typo on the, this slide, so it's one five three, not one four three, nine three seven eight. Uh, press pound to skip participant ID, and the password is the numeral one.
Thank you. So with that, we will begin with speakers registered in opposition, beginning with Bruce Jacobs.
The time has begun.
Mr. Jacobs? We'll wait a moment to make sure that we're not experiencing any technical difficulties.
Hello, how you doing? This is, good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, this is Bruce, Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of the Rockaways, Southeast Wind. I'm very against this. Wait, first of all, I hope everybody's well and feeling these times. This is excuse, this definitely should be really being passed, because disabled and computer-reliberate people cannot be involved in this process. HPD promises the world, you guys approved a project in the Rockaways, that they have no stores, they have nothing, this crime law. They're telling you without commitments that they're gonna build up stores, and they always throw black and brown in the, in the, in the mess. Guess what? I represent black and brown community. We don't want just low, low, low income buildings. We want businesses and we want union workers. We don't want just promises that can abuse certain groups. HPD has a history of using non-neighboring, non-union, and also corrupt organizations that do their jobs. They say you're gonna improve the neighborhood? I don't see it. This is a very serious thing. Like I said, during this time, I can't see how these jobs are being rushed. If our lives are in danger, why they rush? The carpenters and the ironworkers are very disappointed in the jobs that HPD approves, because HPD never uses the right people. They say you're gonna use neighborhood people, they use outsiders coming to this neighborhood and are involved in it. Getting back to also, I've heard you, I know we're not really supposed to say it, but you said that they're gonna bring all kinds of jobs, and that in the other, in the industrial city, that's another thing. Why isn't it being rushed, let me just think. But this case here, they're gonna noise, their income levels is too low, another thing is they're not giving opportunity to the people, they're promising the world, and, and then they're not giving no commitments on nothing. I understand that you guys, you're sending this one job, you're not doing that, you know, nothing really bad. All right. Please, think about it. He says he did so much for East New York, he didn't do nothing for East New York. And now he's saying fifteen-ten Broadway, that he's gonna turn it up, and he's, his way to get it past us by saying he's gonna give minorities. I start home ownership? Let's see, if he, he, he has that history, and he hasn't told a bit truth before, and he's saying, he's saying it now? Please, I'm not just rattling on. I'm a guy who is very embalmed, and he's saying.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Thank you for your testimony. Um, any questions for Mr. Jacobs? Thank you. Um, we will now move to speakers in support, beginning with Sanadi Wadsworth, who will be followed by Alexis Alvarez. Ms. Wadsworth?
Your time has begun.
Let's wait until we're certain that she has connected before starting the clock, please.
Okay.
And again, we'll give a moment for people to connect. Jess, are you able to tell if Ms. Wadsworth is connecting?
It looks like we may have lost connection with her.
Okay, we will return to her and then turn now to Alexis Alvarez.
Hi, good morning, Chairperson. Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I'm a union conferter with the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I'm in favor of rezoning, assuming that this project will be union. Um, as a woman in my union and fellow Brooklyn native, I know that good union jobs with a prevailing wage prevent job displacement, and they also lessen the need for government assistance. So it's definitely making it a reality for others like myself and other workers to be able to achieve, you know, economic stability and financial freedom. Um, our fellow union brothers and sisters in all these areas from the ground up, they're also, you know, native Brooklynites as well, and we're already in the community, whether it be charity, community outreach, vocational training, all of which, you know, proves to definitely build a stronger community. So to conclude, I definitely want to say that, um, by choosing union, you're definitely choosing safety, time under craftsmanship, and skill. Thank you so much for your time, Chairperson.
And Ms. Alvarez, questions from the Commission?
Yes. I do have a question.
No, I, no, no, I'm sorry. This is the time for the Commissioners, um, asking questions, and I see that Commissioner Deloos has raised her hand.
Hi, Ms. Alvarez, thanks for, uh, participating today. Um, can, can you state what, what the status of conversations, what the conversation is, uh, between the development team and the carpenters' union, if you have that information?
Um, no, unfortunately, I do not have that information. I am a second-year apprentice, so I, I, uh, don't have any information from that end, unfortunately.
Thank you for coming or participating. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me, Chairperson. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the Commission? Well, thank you then, Ms. Alvarez.
No problem. Thank you very much for having me.
And we will now see if, um, Sanadi Wadsworth has reestablished connection? Okay, if I could ask Madam Secretary if any other folks have registered to speak on this item?
I don't know.
Does not appear, Madam Chair. Now, we do not see anybody else further registered.
Okay, and.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question just on the protocol?
Yes.
So we're gonna, we're leaving the record open so that if, uh, Sanadi wanted to send a letter, and then also going back to the comments of, uh, uh, Bruce Jacobs, i- if people who are impaired can, uh, be, you know, they, they have the ability to send in written testimony too.
Thank you for those two very important clarifications, that yes, we continue to welcome written correspondence. Um, people could also send in, you know, short videos as their testimony, and certainly should Ms. Wadsworth wish to submit what would have been her oral testimony, we will welcome it.
And how long do we keep that a direct record open as a matter of policy now, um, on all projects being that were, um, remote?
Brian, do you want to address that?
Uh, we typically, uh, collect, uh, feedback, uh, up until the week before the vote, so that we can get it, get the information to you, um, so.
Correct, but are we keeping the record open, uh, on all hearings another few days so that in case testimony comes in later, or?
It's actually more than just a couple of days. It's, well, just about a week before the vote.
Yeah.
And we know that we have, um, it's measured in months the time we have before the vote, and so there will be quite the opportunity.
Yeah, I know that. I just wanted it to be on the record, so.
Yep, sure. Madam Chair, I just also want to note, and just for expediency, um, uh, Mr. Quincy Eli Katie has, uh, signed up to this.
Okay, and so we could recognize him now?
Yes. My administrators, please unmute him.
Your time has begun.
Uh, in, in reference to the self-storage application, uh, in Mass.
Well, I'll pray that that is our next public, uh, hearing. So if you could, uh, we will mute you again, but if you could stand by so that you could testify on that matter. And then I am checking whether anyone has signed up to speak on fifteen-ten Broadway, Brooklyn. And not hearing otherwise, then this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number thirty-seven, CD2C200031ZSQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning fifty-nine dash oh-two Borden Avenue Self-Storage.
First speaker will be the applicant, Nora Martin. And Ms. Martin, you may begin.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Nora Martin from Ackerman LLP, representing the applicant, Home Depot USA. I'll be presenting today, and I'm joined by Bruce Talby from Home Depot, John Carrickus from Greenberg Farrow Architects, and Allison Ruddock from VHB, all of whom are available to answer questions. Next. This is an application for a self storage special permit pursuant to VR Section seventy-four, nine, thirty-two, to allow the development of a self-storage facility at a site, shown here, located at fifty-nine oh-two Borden Avenue in Massapeh, as part of a larger as-of-right commercial development that includes a Home Depot store currently under construction, and two retail buildings. You can see the site outlined in red on the map, it's approximately three hundred fifteen thousand square feet, located in M-one-one district, in sub-area two, for Appendix J, within the Massapeh IBZ. As you'll see on the site plan shortly, twenty thousand six hundred seventy-five square feet, less than ten percent of the site is allocated to the proposed self-storage facility, that is the subject of this special permit application. Next. This slide provides an aerial view of the site and the surrounding area. Next. The special permit that's required to allow the self-storage facility here requires the commission to find that the site is appropriate for self-storage facility use based on the land use characteristics of the proposed site and the surrounding area. In making this determination, the commission may consider several factors, including whether there is a concentration of existing self-service storage facilities in the surrounding area. Next. As shown on this map, there are no other self-storage facilities located within a quarter-mile of the development site. Next. And as you can see on this map, which looks at a larger geographic area, even beyond the quarter-mile radius, there are no self-storage facilities located in the neighborhood of the site, in Community District Two, they're all located much farther west. Next. As noted, the proposed development includes a Home Depot and two retail buildings, as you can see from this rendering, the self-storage facility, which is a six-story building adjacent to the Long Island Expressway, and would contain one hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-three square feet of floor area. The site also includes five hundred twenty parking spaces. Next. The self-storage facility is shown here, shaded in red, so a long, narrow portion of the site immediately adjacent to both the Home Depot store and fronting on the Long Island Expressway, and then Borden Avenue. Parking is provided at the center of the site and on the Home Depot roof. The parking requirement for a Home Depot store of this size is significant, about four hundred fifty spaces, and limits the other types of uses that can be on the site. Next. These are just renderings showing the proposed development from several views. Next. Understanding the concerns that led to the establishment of a self-storage special permit in two thousand seventeen, we believe this particular proposed self-storage use is appropriate at this location as part of a larger as-of-right development. The surrounding area in the Massapeh IBZ has a wide range of construction-related businesses, and given the proximity of the self-storage facility to Home Depot...
I'm afraid that the time has expired, so I would now open it up to the commission for questions. Yes, Commissioner Wong Pashat.
Yes, I'll... Thank you for the presentation, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you speak in regards to the Borough President's recommendations, one in particular with regards to how you're gonna... Sorry, with regards to the advertisement for heavily marketed industrial uses? How are you going to do that?
Conditions... And then recommend approval. The two other buildings are under contract, they will not be tenanted by Home Depot, which is the applicant for the self-storage special permit. Home Depot has obviously no objection to having industrial tenants there, but they will not be managing the marketing for those buildings.
Commissioner, please.
So, thank you for the presentation. You noted the parking requirements of four hundred and fifty spaces, which I think, you know, from practice, is really quite excessive, and that, you know, the zoning code hasn't caught up with utilization of parking of this kind. Do you know if the requirements here exceed the site selection requirements of the operator, in this case, Home Depot?
It's actually all governed by the zoning... Oh, are you saying does the zoning requirement exceed what we anticipate the need would be?
Yeah, I think it's important for us, as a commission, to sort of understand where the zoning is... You know, and parking, it just comes up a lot for us. So out of curiosity, if that's something we could find out.
Did you want to... Did you want to respond to that, Ms. Martin? Ms. Martin, are you still on the line?
I guess not. She's still there.
Well, if that's something that the applicant could...
Yep.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
And if I understand the question is, does Home Depot believe that this amount of parking is necessary? The amount of parking called for by the zoning resolution is all need, whether it is all needed for the site, whether the outdated zoning...
I'm trying to say that it's necessary. I'm curious as to whether their typical site selection requirements, you know, in this case, the zoning, does the requested parking exceed their typical site selection requirement?
Great. The departments will follow up with the applicant on that. Commissioner Deloos, if you could give us your question, in the hopes that Ms. Martin is able to rejoin, and again, if not, the department will pass along your question to her.
Sure, I have a couple of questions. The first, and I think she kind of intimated this, that Home Depot wouldn't be managing the self-storage facility, so it'd be helpful to know who would be, who the proposal is there. And then, I know we talked about this in the review session, about whether or not this model of co-locating a self-storage immediately adjacent to Home Depot, whether it exists? I understand that it does. I would be helpful to know what the utilization is at that other site. And then finally, I actually would, it would be helpful, I think, for the applicant to walk through, continue walking through their justification for the special permit.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martin, are you returned?
It doesn't look like she's on yet, so we'll note the question. And there are some speakers, I believe, who were signed up from the applicant team's follow-up, who may be able to address that, so...
Yes, that certainly would be, that certainly would be helpful. Okay, I see that Commissioner Levin has questions.
Yeah, actually, I had the same question that Commissioner Deloos just asked, so thank you for that. And I also realized that in the awkwardness of our learning how to work with this remote presentation format, perhaps the applicant could... I don't know how far through the presentation Ms. Martin was able to get before their time clock ran out, if they would like to submit that to us, so we could see the whole presentation, that would be welcome. And in fact, maybe they can even do it in the video format, so we could get the full benefit of her thoughts on that.
Thank you for that suggestion. Other questions from the commission? Well, then, in absentia, I will thank Ms. Martin for her testimony, and we will now start with speakers who are opposed, and then the five speakers opposed, five in support, until we have allowed all who wish to testify to do so. Our first speaker in opposition is Bruce Jacobs, who will be followed by Ryan Cagle.
Your time has begun.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Jacobs? If I could ask that we move on to Ryan Cagle, and when, if you could let me know when Mr. Jacobs rejoins, we can then hear his testimony. Mr. Cagle?
Thank you, Chairperson Lago and City Planning Commission members. My name is Ryan Cagle. I am the Industrial Business Program Assistant at the Business Outreach Center Network and the Massapeh Industrial Business Association. I work with, under the Director Quincy Eli-Kate, of the Industrial Business Program. As a nonprofit, we support industrial and manufacturing businesses across Queens, and today I am urging the City Planning Commission to vote no on the self-storage special permit application. I take pride in the work that we do to support industrial businesses. Recently, I assisted a family-owned, commercial HVAC design and fabrication business with its move into a new facility in Massapeh, in the Massapeh Industrial Business Zone. A business that will bring eighty skilled manufacturing jobs to the community, and moving their fabrication equipment was no easy feat, which required large trucks and special permits, special street closure permits from DOT. But of course, finding a location wasn't easy for this business either. Industrial properties are highly contested and treasured resource in New York City, as prices continue to rise due to a myriad of issues, including the encroachment of self-storage in areas designated for manufacturing. It's no surprise that self-storage operators find industrial areas appealing. As shown in the map that I submitted with my written testimony, a cursory Google search will demonstrate that this area...
I'm afraid that we have lost your video feed, Mr. Cagle.
Uh...
Madam Secretary, please add fifteen seconds to the clock.
Um, so two facilities are within a mile of the Home Depot site. Three facilities are within a mile of the Home Depot site, two are inside the Massapeh IBZ. Frankly, I find the developer's presentation map nearly humorous in the way that they have, you know, placed their, look, the Home Depot self-storage in nearly the bottom right-hand corner of the map, totally omitting other self-storage facilities near the site. And I would also add that the few self-storage facilities that they do show are squarely within the Long Island City Industrial Business Zone. But thankfully, we're not alone in opposing self-storage and recognizing its threat to manufacturing jobs. We're proud to support the Ten Point Industrial Action Plan and the two thousand seventeen Self-Storage Text Amendment. And I quote from the city's own website, "Self-storage facilities are seen as low-job-generating use that primarily serves households rather than business needs. They're typically developed on large sites near designated truck routes, and are limited in supply, which could potentially provide further siting opportunities for industrial and more job-intensive businesses." Thank you again for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle, and thank you for the work that you do. I'll now open it up to the commission, beginning with a question from Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, Chair... Thank you, Mr. Cagle, good to hear from you. And I think, you know, we often share your sort of instinctive concern about self-storage, but we're told that in this particular case, it's highly connected to Home Depot, and the use of the self-storage will be by the contractors who are coming, getting supplies from Home Depot, using the self-storage as a staging area for their work, and it's therefore, in some way, kind of well-integrated into the industrial uses of the neighborhood. How do you respond to that?
My sense is that if that were true, the team at Home Depot would have no problem restricting users to manufacturing and self-storage uses only. The fact is, they know this to be false, and will market the self-storage to primarily residential tenants, as with other self-storage facilities. The contractors that we've spoken to, you know, have vehicles that they'll often need to store, and so, you know, they're really looking for larger facilities than a self-storage unit can provide. And also the contractors that we've spoken with, and we have relationships with many, many contractors and industrial manufacturers, that the materials they use for job site materials are really consumed sort of day up. They, you know, they won't be storing bags of concrete, as those will be used on the job site.
Commissioner Deloos?
I guess similar to Commissioner Bernie's line of questioning, do you know if we should expect testimony from any of those contractors? I think, you know, I think it'd be helpful to hear directly from them, if that's something that, you know, the Massapeh IBZ can help with. The other is, you know, you specifically mentioned that Home Depot isn't open to restricting the users to the kinds of businesses that really support the manufacturing uses. Is that something that you've actually discussed with them, them voluntarily doing that? And if you could, you know, provide more insight into any conversation?
Thank you for your question. That has been specifically discussed. The Queens Borough President recommendation was sort of a cursory, you know, note that the Home Depot would market the self-storage to manufacturing tenants, which we do not feel is a strong enough commitment to industrial uses and industrial tenants. And we've also had spoken with the Home Depot team directly to present a number of alternatives. And in regards to testimony, we have Robert Torey, President of Valente Yeast, who has actually expressed interest in using this specific parcel to, as a new location for his distribution and warehousing business. I'll let Mr. Torey speak more to his business and provide his testimony later.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Cagle? And thank you, thank you for participating, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Our next speaker is Chris Walters.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Chris Walters, and I'm the rezoning technical assistance coordinator at the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development, ANHD. We're a membership organization of NYC neighborhood-based housing and economic development groups, with a mission to ensure flourishing neighborhoods and decent affordable housing for all New Yorkers. We also convene and participate in the Industrial Jobs Coalition, a citywide alliance of policy advocates, community organizations, and industrial business service providers. And I'm here today to ask you to oppose the special permit application for a self-storage facility at fifty-nine oh-two Borden Avenue. Protecting and promoting our industrial sector is crucial to the city's overall economic development, now more than ever. NYC's industrial sector provides over four hundred and fifty thousand jobs, and helps create a robust working middle class, providing access to good-paying jobs while often not requiring a college degree. Over eighty percent of those employed in the industrial sector are people of color. Now is the time to protect and grow these jobs further. Self-storage facilities do not do this. They consume scarce land slated for industrial and manufacturing uses, create almost no jobs, on average, they employ no more than five people, and exacerbate the rising cost of industrial real estate. Most of the four hundred jobs created by the Home Depot development will come from the as-of-right retail component, which is not affected by this special permit application. Furthermore, as we've heard, the self-storage facility will not be managed by Home Depot, meaning they will have no control over hiring. It is a speculative development for an operator yet to be determined. As we also heard, the text of the zoning resolution enumerates factors that should be considered in granting approval, including recent industrial development trends indicating demand, the size of the zoning lot, and distance from highways and truck routes. These considerations make especially clear why self-storage is not an appropriate use here. As local businesses and advocates have attested, there is a high demand for new manufacturing space within the IBZ, including one hundred and forty thousand square foot development on Metropolitan Avenue, which will house at least twenty smaller manufacturing businesses, again, similar in size to the self-storage development, the proposed self-storage development. Meanwhile, the immediate proximity of this development site to major highways make it ideally suited for manufacturing uses. We believe it is incumbent upon the... We believe it is incumbent upon the city to support developments that generate good jobs for New Yorkers to contribute to an equitable recovery from the coronavirus pandemic. We believe the administration made the right decision in 2017 by implementing this special permit requirement, and we do not believe that this application meets the criteria laid out. Approving this permit would send a clear signal to self-storage developers that New York City's IBZs are open to speculators and would represent a permanent loss to the stock of available industrial and manufacturing real estate. For these reasons, we urge you to oppose the application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll now open it to the commission for any questions. Commissioner Bellows?
Uh, I was actually gonna ask Chris, um, you know, why he believed the applicant didn't meet the special permit criteria, but he, he actually, uh, did that already, so, um, now I'm looking back at my notes. He covered that, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think just again, there, there is that clear, you know, clear indication of, of demand and interest in, in developing new industrial space in the IBZ.
Thank you. Other questions? Then thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
I understand that, um, Bruce Jacobs has rejoined, and so I would call on him next. Mr. Jacobs?
Good, good, good morning again, everybody. How's everybody? Hello?
Yeah.
Does anybody hear me?
Yes, please continue with your testimony.
Okay, sorry, I'm not used to this either. Once again, yes, I agree with the first person's testimony about this site. First of all, why is Home Depot, some people, uh, a storage space piggybacking in back of Home Depot? First of, you know, that's, that's not right. And then on top of it, they're not taking responsibility for the contractors that are gonna be there. I've seen cases of this before. The cases that I've seen is that some contractors, some contractors dump stuff in that parking lot and use that parking lot, 453 spaces, as a ground for the, for their guys to pick up the stuff. This thing is to- totally no good for the neighborhood. It's no good that Home Depot is getting a full say, that they're not giving no guarantees to the warehouses, like this guy's the first guy, first speaker spoke. The second guy, he's also talking about that they could bring in job, you know, other organizations could bring in jobs and other stuff that Home Depot cannot do by doing to a self-storage. The self-storage with the warehousing is not guaranteed by nobody, and I don't like that idea because there's something wrong with it. During these times, like you said, there's 700,000 guys without jobs, and then you're giving a self-storage and Home Depot fooled, the fool thing. I have stock in Home Depot, but I, I don't like the idea of one company getting all that property and they're gonna be running when you could put industrial, you could put an industrial city over there. You can make indus- big, big warehouses over there. Home Depot don't need, shouldn't be the ones to decide what's going on. Thank you very much. And, you know, it's just very, very, uh, you know, I want you guys to look into it. You know, you guys always look into it, but I don't know if it's, you know, it means anything to anyone. And once again, the disabled people, they have no say in this, and, you know, I, you know, I understand what you said, but very disabled people can't really, and with COVID, with our lives in danger, to be approving stuff like this now. I really don't agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions for Mr. Jacobs? Thank you again, Mr. Jacobs. Our next speaker will be Quincy Ely-Kate. Quincy Ely-Kate?
If you press star six to unmute. Mr. Ely-Kate?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, dear Chairperson Lago and City Planning Commission members, my name is Quincy Ely-Kate. I'm Director of the Masbeth Industrial Business Association, a project of the BACH Network. We're a nonprofit that proudly supports industrial and manufacturing businesses and jobs across Queens. I'm urging you to vote no on the self-storage special permit application at 5902 Borden Avenue in the Masbeth IBZ. It is clear now more than ever, as we face COVID, that as paramount, the city prioritized preserving and protecting industrial manufacturing businesses in the IBZs. These businesses have been instrumental in keeping New York breathing and moving by supporting our local food supplies, manufacturing and distributing PPE, and maintaining our critical infrastructure systems. This is also a moment to recognize the value of the local industrial and manufacturing sectors for the, for providing quality, well-paying jobs for many people, especially disadvantaged communities of color, which have been so economically devastated by this pandemic. Without the protections that the IBZs provide for essential industrial manufacturing businesses, we are a city that is weaker, less resilient, and with an ever-widening racial wealth gap. As the first application for a self-storage special permit since 2017, the outcome of this process is not only critical to the businesses and jobs in the Masbeth IBZ, but for the precedent it sets for speculative self-storage development in the IBZs across the city. It is striking to see that this site, which was previously home to many jobs as the bustling Coca-Cola bottling and distribution facility, now being planned for an immense development, 137,000-square-foot dead space structure with no quality jobs. It is also important to note that developers behind the application have stated at other past meetings that this speculative self-storage facility would bring an estimated 400 jobs. However, the self-storage facility creates almost no job, and including that figure within the special permit application is deceptive and convolutes the decision-making process for community leaders. Additionally, a promise to temporarily use union workers during construction phase is the tiniest drop in the bucket in comparison to the numerous permanent industrial and manufacturing jobs these developments displays. The developers have also suggested that self-storage tenants will be nearby general contractors. This is unfounded, and the developers know this to be true, as if they have rejected a simple compromise which our organization could support to restrict the self-storage facility for use to only small businesses. However, the truth is that the self-storage business model is designed for residential users, and any one-off example of a business potentially using a self-storage facility does not justify an exception to develop an unrestricted self-storage facility in our IBZ. Finally, the zoning resolution indicates eight points of criteria, and we believe this application falls short of reasonably satisfying any of these points in a way to justify an exception to the zoning resolution. So I urge you...
Thank you, Mr. Ely-Kate. Um, I will now open it to questions from the commission, but I will note that the commission has approved, um, a self-storage special permit in Queens, um, in proximity to, I believe it is JFK Airport. Commissioner Levin?
Um, yes, thank you. I had a question about the specific findings, and, um, Mr. Ely-Kate, you were referring to those as your time clock ran out. Um, I don't know if you are submitting, um, a written through analysis of your take on the eight findings, but that would be helpful to us. But I wanted to ask you in particular about the finding that, um, deals with whether this, this site is, um, better suited, uh, for self-storage facilities than for the allowed uses, which are predominantly industrial. Um, so putting that question for maybe inside out, um, given that the Home Depot, um, development is as of right, and we're only talking about a small portion of the area, is that, was, is that small portion something that could be used for, um, good industrial uses?
We seem to have lost connectivity.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so this, yes, this is a smaller site, uh, but it's 137,000 square feet, um, of FAR. That represents a significant amount of, of area that could be used for industrial. We have, it's, it's perfectly situated near the BQE. We have multiple businesses that would love to have that site, um, and they would build multi-level, uh, you know, warehousing, distribution below, and even manufacturing above. So, I think the argument that it's not suitable for other industrial uses is just unfounded, and I think we would hear from other businesses that could use that today.
That might be, um, helpful testimony for us to have.
Yeah.
I'll note for the commission that there are quite a number of speakers signed up on this item, so I anticipate we'll be hearing from other businesses.
Okay, great.
Other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Ely-Kate, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Kevin Chu.
Hello, uh, good morning, Chairperson Lago and the City Planning Commission members. My name is Kevin Chu. I'm the Program Manager with a nonprofit called the Business Outreach Center Network, and we, uh, have service contracts with SBA serving multiple IBZ. I'm here today to read a letter that was addressed to you, uh, by Mr. Brian Coleman, who's the CEO of Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center. Unfortunately, he was not able to join today, so I'm here to read the letter, uh, that was dated August 18th, 2020. Dear Chairperson Lago and City Planning Commission members, we're writing to you to vote no on Home Depot's self-storage special permit application at 59-02 Borden Avenue in the Masbeth IBZ, and preserve manufacturing areas for job-intensive industrial businesses, not passive storage. Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center, GMBC, is a nonprofit developer of affordable manufacturing space for small businesses. We purchase industrial buildings and redevelop them for occupancy by small manufacturing businesses. We have developed over 700,000 square feet of space in Brooklyn and Queens. We own and manage six buildings, which are home to over 700 manufacturing jobs amongst 110 companies. GMBC has found itself bidding against the self-storage industry continually for the past 10 years in numerous manufacturing zones. In 2017, we competed with a self-storage company when we purchased a property in Ozone Park, Queens. In the building where our tenants will have as many as 80 jobs, the self-storage company we were bidding against would have had six jobs in the 85,000-square-foot property in the first year, with the hope that they would be able to reduce that number to four jobs within a year. Non-industrial uses in industrial business zones, like self-storage facilities, consume large parcels of scarce land and slate for industrial and manufacturing uses, create very few jobs, and inflate the cost of industrial real estate. If allowed, this development will represent another significant permanent loss to the stock of available valuable industrial and manufacturing real estate. This property offers a viable opportunity for manufacturing businesses that would support job growth were they able to make the Masbeth IBZ their long-term home. Manufacturing businesses need manufacturing space, not self-storage space. In every borough, in every IBZ, we find examples of innovative development that contribute to tens of thousands of industrial and manufacturing jobs. The proposed self-storage building at 59-02 Borden Avenue is a prime location that would in set bring jobs and growth to the local economy.
Thank you, Mr. Chu, and I would ask if you could, um, actually, you mentioned that you had already submitted the letter from GMBC, and so the commission will have an opportunity to see the balance of the letter. And I would open it up to the commission to see if there are any questions for Mr. Chu. And thank you, Mr. Chu, for taking the time to testify. Our next speaker is Bruce Talby, who is available for questions. I think, Mr. Talby, it would be helpful if you could identify your affiliation so that the commission could determine if they have questions for you.
Uh, yes, I'm Bruce Talby. I'm the Construction Manager for the Home Depot's Northeast Operations, and I'm managing the development of this parcel.
So I would ask the commission if they have any questions for Mr. Talby. Commissioner Bellows?
Mr. Talby, can you tell me if, if this were to be approved, um, what the phasing would be in terms of the store versus the self-storage?
The store is, um, gonna tentatively open this fall. Um, the self-storage, if approved, uh, would get its permits and get underway, uh, probably in the spring of, of next year.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Levin?
Well, my question has to do with operations, which may be beyond what the part, part of the project that you're working on, but how is the Home Depot, from an operational standpoint, gonna relate to the self-storage facility, given that we've been told it's gonna be under, um, separate ownership and management?
It will, in fact, be under separate ownership. Um, as far as how it will operate, we, we do find a synergy wherever we, um, have developed self-storage alongside of Home Depot. Uh, our customers seem to gravitate to it. It's a natural fit, uh, and, um, our small contractors do use it, uh, and, and that's been our, our experience, which is why we're trying to pull one here, as well as other facilities where we've developed, uh, self-storage successfully. Uh, so it, it seems to be a good working, uh, relationship for us.
Okay, so that's something that just happens naturally or is a result of the self-storage facility being so close to the, um, to the store? Nothing, nothing particularly encourage or discourage?
Right, we don't discourage it, or we, you know, and we, we market our properties, and there, there are people that typically come to us and, and want to build alongside of our store because they feel they get a benefit of being next to a Home Depot.
Okay, and you mentioned, um, having experienced this kind of combination at, at other locations. Can you tell us a little bit more about how this, um, combined use is evolving within Home Depot? Is this something you're particularly seeking to have happen going forward?
Uh, no, we don't necessarily seek it out. Uh, more, more to the opposite, they seek us, and if we have, uh, available parcel of land, um, you know, we've, we've dealt with various different operators of self-storage, so it's not just one company. Um, they're, um, a good use for us in, in that they don't require, um, a highly, um, intensive parking requirement, which most other uses do require. So they're able to, um, operate without, you know, needing to provide a lot of parking, which, you know, many other uses have more intense parking requirements.
Okay, well, just following up on that, um, I don't know if you were on the line when Commissioner Ortiz asked your question about the amount of parking that's required under the zoning rules and how that matches up with the amount of parking that Home Depot desires to see. Um, are you having to provide more parking here, um, than you would ordinarily provide?
No, we're, we're providing parking as per the requirements. Uh, there is...
How does that match your requirements?
Well, Home Depot's requirements, uh, you know, will, will vary, I guess, you know, as far as we're concerned, based on the volumes of our stores. Um, so this store is, uh, planned to do a, a fairly robust volume, and, uh, we feel that all the parking that we're, is being provided, uh, will be required. As a matter of fact, we're, uh, probably somewhat short of what we would like to see for a facility like this. Um, but being a urban location that it is, um, we're managing through, you know, having to put, uh, a lot of the parking on our roof or our building and, and having to do that at a much greater expense than typically would be for grade-level parking. But, um, uh, that, that's, you know, what we feel is necessary to run our business.
Um, and one last thing, are you able to cite any other locations that might be good examples for us to understand how this one might work? In other words, a Home Depot that's located, um, in an area that has been industrial, that has a self-storage facility, um, connected with...
I guess College Point. I think we have one in Long Island City, not Long Island City, um, but certainly one in College Point.
Okay.
That would be a good example.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairperson Knuckle?
Thank you. Uh, this is a hypothetical, but I'll, I'll ask it anyway. Uh, if it, uh, if it were to turn out that, uh, the storage space, um, uh, was not sufficiently, um, patronized, uh, would, um, would Home Depot consider, uh, reutilizing the space as, um, a manufacturing space for, uh, uh, for the kinds of businesses that, uh, would be otherwise, uh, located within the IBZ?
Well, I mean, we have... Well, I mean, we have no, nothing against any of the industrial uses. In fact, we have never been approached by any of the industrial users that testified earlier, so I can't really say with any certainty about that. Certainly, it's a small parcel, so whatever development goes on there, we'll have to be able to be compliant with the requirements of the Building Code. So in terms of parking and skyplane and so forth, so, you know, we feel like we'd be open to anything else, but right now, that's not what's on the table. We're talking about a potential sale to a self-storage user, and I guess that's really the argument being presented today.
Oh, so you would not lease it, you would, in fact, sell the parcel to a self-storage user?
Yes, that is what is planned, we are planning to sell the parcel.
Other questions, Vice Chair? Hearing none, I will next turn it over to Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. You spoke a little bit about the mix of users, and I'm curious, in light of the college point, I believe, do you have any sense, from your experience, what the balance is between, you know, consumer users who might see this as an amenity to, you know, the Home Depot versus, you know, local businesses? And a follow-up question to that is, what kinds of businesses do you find are in fact using this, because we heard in previous testimony that, you know, it's not really conducive to, you know, certain kinds of small businesses?
The contractors that we, that utilize it, that we're aware of, are the small contractors that do home improvements for people, and the size of the units within the self-storage do vary, so some of them provide larger spaces, there are smaller spaces as well within those that we're aware, but they typically will store things that are long-lead items that they want to make sure for their customers, they have in their possession to be able to complete a project, custom windows, custom doors, custom millwork, similarly with sinks, showers, tubs, all the types of highly decorative types of items, that they want to make sure that they have them in a secure place so that when they start the project, they can get it completed within reasonable time, so they are using it for those types of uses.
And the balance between users, any ballpark?
Yeah, I couldn't really speculate, I'm not a self-storage user, but they report to us that they see, you know, a pretty good mix of customers, so it's not, you know, entirely contractors by any means, but certainly enough to keep their storage lockers full most of the time, and the contractors that we know that come into our stores seem to enjoy that, having that amenity at their disposal nearby our store.
It would be helpful to hear from, you know, contractors who find this kind of space useful for them, and, you know, I sort of state that, because I think it really applies for us to understand whether you make the findings. Thank you.
I believe we have some that will testify that way.
Commissioner Levin, please.
Yes, I have a question, can you clarify or shed some light on exactly these 400 to 500 jobs that this will create? Are these full-time jobs, part-time?
There's a good, the good mix of full-time and part-time, it does see some seasonal swings, so at its peak in springtime and typically in late fall, it will get up to, you know, around that 450 number of associates, but it's, you know, typically probably runs more consistently closer to the 300 to 350 number, and then spikes up during our seasonal swing periods.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, I just wanted to follow up on Vice Chair Knuckles' question with a perhaps slightly less hypothetical. If this application was denied, what would happen to that space?
We would continue to market it for sale. We'd take offers from other applicants and, you know, evaluate whether or not they make sense for us.
And have you had other applications for the site, or is the self-storage the only game so far?
That's the only one that has approached us, and that's who we are courting right now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bellows.
Thanks for the information, some of the things I was gonna ask have been asked, I'm just wondering, the College Point example that you shared, does Home Depot own that site, or does it, Home Depot leased that site?
Speaking specifically about the self-storage?
Yes, I'm sorry, specifically about the self-storage.
Okay, yeah, we typically sell a portion of the parcel to them, so that is, if we find we have excess property within our parcel that can be utilized that way, we sell it, and that's what we did there.
And I'm just wondering if you could kind of walk us through, like, the, you know, how Home Depot weighed the possibility of self-storage versus another manufacturing use versus, especially given the point you made about your parking, and that this might be slightly less than you might even like, and the cost of putting the parking on the roof. Can you kind of walk us through, like, how Home Depot made a decision about that particular sliver of land for self-storage versus other things?
Well, I mean, we looked at it as being a piece of property that didn't really work well with our configuration of our building, so, and it was a parcel that we felt we needed to maximize the value of our investment, and similarly, like, we're selling a portion of the parcel to retail users as well, you know, the economics of our development are driven by how we can get the highest yield for our land when we purchase it. We spent a good deal of money on this parcel, and so we're trying to make a good economic case for the investment to our investors, and, I mean, that's the basic idea behind it.
Other questions from the commission? Then thank you, Mr. Talby. I'll note that the applicant's representative, Nora Martins, has rejoined, and so I would ask if any commissioners are interested in continuing with questions of her, if you could electronically raise your hands now? Okay, then, oh, yes, we have Commissioner Levin. Ms. Martins, if you could unmute yourself.
Yeah, welcome back, Ms. Martins, I think you had stated in your comments that the two retail buildings were under contract, and Mr. Talby alluded to that as well, are you able to identify the users of those two retail buildings?
I'm not aware of any tenants, I mean, the buildings haven't even, they don't even have approved new building applications yet, so I think they're a bit of a ways out from being tenanted, but I don't have that, any information.
Are those being developed by Home Depot, or by the purchasers of those parcels?
No, by the contract entity.
Okay, and it would be then the similar situation, do you have a contract for the self-storage space as well, site?
Yes, that's under contract as well.
It is under...
Obviously, pending, you know, the conclusion of this process.
Of course, so, yeah, so the job's on you to get this approval done, but with that, you do have a committed purchaser?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions from Ms. Martins? Okay, we will then continue with our speakers, and next up will be Danny Pyle, who will be followed by Bishop Mitchell Taylor. Mr. Pyle? Okay, we will then move to Bishop Mitchell Taylor. Could the control room let me know if there are indications that Mr. Pyle or Bishop Taylor are on the line? And Ms. Martins, if you could drop off, that may be part of the challenge.
So, Mr. Pyle, we were having trouble, and we're still trying to get ahold of him, but Bishop Taylor is in the Zoom meeting and unmuted, so he should be able to participate.
All right, do you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Bishop Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone, Chairperson Lago and the commissioners, my name has already been forstated, I'm the CEO and founder of Urban Upbound, I'm happy to be here today in support of the self-storage facility, the mid-application brought by Home Depot. By way of background, I am a lifelong resident of Queensbridge Houses, I founded a nonprofit, citywide nonprofit, Urban Upbound, in 2004, that provides high-quality impact services to residents in public housing for the last 16 years. We serve approximately 25,000 people from our Long Island City campus, and we have four brick-and-mortar facilities in Harlem, Bronx, Far Rockaway, and of course, our flagship in Long Island City. We provide underserved youth and adults with the tools and resources needed to achieve economic mobility and self-sufficiency. Given my experience with entrepreneurs and those that are working in construction, it has been very helpful for those that are not able to afford brick-and-mortar facilities to be able to connect with self-storage facilities that are in close proximity to facilities like Home Depot. So Urban Upbound has worked with several of these entrepreneurs and contractors that have used this as a viable utility. So I believe this project will benefit the entire Masbeth community, and many of the individuals and businesses that Urban Upbound serves, and we support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, questions for Bishop Taylor? Commissioner Bellows.
Hi, Bishop Taylor, it's Michelle Bellows, thank you for participating, I'm just wondering, does Urban Upbound have a relationship with Home Depot in terms of hiring and recruitment for local jobs?
We have recruited for the Home Depot in Long Island City on Northern Boulevard on several occasions, and so our counselors have an ongoing rotation of sending folks to Home Depot.
Do you have a similar relationship with any industrial businesses in the IBZ? You know, those jobs tend to be better paying than what more retail-oriented businesses would provide?
Yeah, well, as you know, Long Island City, Queensbridge, has been surrounded like a moat with the IBZ, and so, but I haven't really, we haven't really experienced any real benefit from the IBZ since it has been in Long Island City, just to answer your question directly.
Seems like an opportunity.
Other questions from the commission? Then thank you, Bishop Taylor, for taking the time to testify.
Thank you.
And if I could ask the behind-the-scenes folks to let me know when Danny Pyle has rejoined, and we will then add him next in the order, and we will now move on.
Oh, I said, will do, yeah.
Thank you. We will move on to Neil Giannelli.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Joseph P. Adabo Jr., I submit this statement in support of the application by Home Depot for the 5902 Borden Avenue Self-Storage Special Permit. I welcome appropriate development like this in the 15th Senate District. The proposal for a self-storage facility as a component of a larger commercial center with a Home Depot store and two other retail buildings represents an excellent new amenity for the district that is consistent with surrounding uses. There is a need in the area for self-storage, both for local residents and for small business owners who will use the facility for their storage needs. A significant number of independent construction contractors based out of Masbeth will also use the facility to store their building materials and equipment due to space concerns at their offices and homes. This project will benefit the Masbeth community, especially given the approximately 400 new jobs that the Home Depot store will bring to Masbeth during a time when retail is suffering and unemployment is at historic levels throughout the city of New York and the borough of Queens. I respectfully request that you approve, that the commission approve the requested special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Then thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
We'll now continue with Robert Correy, to be followed by Darrell Hollen. Again, Ryan, do we see if there is connectivity?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, this is Robert Correy, I've uploaded and sent in a letter, I hope you all can read it, but listening to testimony I want to start today and review what was said. Home Depot has already built the property for their store, they now are asking for a variance to sell off a piece of land which totally goes against the Resolution 74932. They want to part it off, and as they said, so they make the most amount of money on the selling of the land. My business, Letty East Company, has been in New York since 1909, I'm born and bred in New York City, resident, I learned, I grew up in Washington Heights, and I love the city, and I keep my business here. I'm less than a half-mile away and have shown interest in the property, and against what testimony says, at the Queensborough President's meeting, I said I was interested in the property. I also originally reached out to Home Depot, they had some lawyer call me up, and basically wanted to get me into some kind of bidding war, and never, he never forwarded his confirmation. So we are interested, our lease is coming up soon. What do you mean, I'm on the computer, it just asked me to unmute, I just muted it again, though.
If people other than Mr. Correy could mute themselves, please? Mr. Correy, if you could continue?
And it should be in testimony at the Queensborough President's meeting, that I was interested in the property, as I, in testimony, they're saying nobody's interested. It's a perfect piece of property for us, it's less than, it's about a half-mile from our current location on 6126 Morris Avenue. We are a food and greens distributor, and if anybody today is currently worried about food insecurity, we are the people who have the eggs, the butter, the flour, the sugar, all the stuff that New York needs, okay, located within the boroughs. It is tough to pay the prices for real estate today, and Home Depot's testimony today was, they want the variance to be able to part off this property so they could maximize their return on the sale of it, and that makes me not in a position to be able to afford the crazy monies that Home Depot will charge for it. Home Depot's jobs was based upon the building of the home repair shop. The industrial storage here, it doesn't fit the profile, and it, as we've heard in testimony, only has three or four people. We're fully interested in it, we have 23 employees, 25 employees right now, we're growing, we want to add, bring it up to 50, we are what the city wants for the property.
Mr. Correy, we'll give an additional 15 seconds because of the technical interruption before, but if you could wrap up.
Okay, well, thank you, so, again, we are gonna be forced out of New York as our lease comes up, we are very interested in this property, we have a strong banking relationship with Chase, and we did make the formal offer that we were interested in testimony in the Queensborough President's office. in the Queensborough President's office. Thank you for your time. Please read the letter I submitted.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Correy. Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
Mr. Correy, thanks for being here. Can you remind me again, how many jobs would, if you were successful in purchasing the site that's proposed for the self-storage facility, how many jobs would either be retained or created?
Sure. We're currently having anywhere between 23 and 25 employees today. We did not cut anybody during COVID, and we were looking at actually a facility in Yonkers where it was an acquisition, where we would bring on another 25 to 30 employees. So, basically doubled from the 20s to around 50.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Correy? I want to thank you, Mr. Correy, for taking the time from running your business to testify before us. And we will now move on to Darrell Hollen.
Thank you, Chair President Lago and City Planning Commission members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Darrell Hollen, and I am the Brooklyn East Industrial Business Service Provider for the Business Outreach Center or BACH Network. The BACH Network through the New York City Department of City Planning. I lost my place. Oh, boy. The BACH Network through the New York City Department of City, the BACH Network through the New York City Department of Small Business Services manages six of New York City's 21 industrial business zones. Two in Brooklyn and four in Queens. I stand here today as the industrial business service provider for the Flatlands Fairfield and East New York IBZs in Brooklyn, with providing the same services in Massbeth and the Ridgeway IBZs in Queens, to name a few. The 42,000-square, I'm going to give an example, what self-storage displaces, how it does. The 42,000-square-foot, multiple-thousand-unit cluttered storage, is the name, facility at 5601 Forster Avenue in the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ is a strong example how storage facilities displace small industrial and manufacturing businesses. And one of the defining reasons is that the denial of a special permit to erect a storage facility in any one of the city's IBZs is paramount to the preservation and growth of the industrial community as we progress into the 21st century. We are opposed to approval of the Home Depot permit to erect a self-storage facility at 5902 Borden Avenue in neighboring Massbeth IBZ. 5601 Forster Avenue was once three locations with a Preston Court and East 56 addresses in addition to the current Forster address. These locations once housed two steel fabricators, one on Forster Avenue, one on East 56 Street, and a commercial container distributor and shipping company on Preston Court. Three companies employed about 15 employees, mostly local residents raising a family, and they made a living wage job. An average job for manufacturers is about $60,000, where it comes to storage facilities is minimum wage. Limiting self-storage facilities and IBZs are part of New York City's 2015 industrial plan to preserve the integrity in industrial areas. During the COVID-19 pandemic, limiting industrial service facilities and IBZs is paramount to maintaining industrial real estate to promote and achieve the living wage jobs manufacturing provides. Unnecessary self-storage facilities create pedestrian foot traffic and higher rents that are unwelcome by products in industrial areas. By rigorously reviewing the current self-storage special permit at 5902 Borden Avenue, it is a common to way in a definitive means and opportunities that are here now to create new state-of-the-art manufacturing facilities to support the growth of an already burgeoning, culturally-rich and diversified community that Massbeth, New York is. I implore Madam Chair and the New York City Planning Commission members to stand for community first and deny the.
Thank you, Mr. Hollen. Questions from the commission? Then thank you for your testimony, Mr. Hollen.
Chair Lago, could I add one thing?
I'm afraid not. So, we run our meetings with the tight time limits, but we would very much welcome receiving your letter or any additional testimony that you would want to submit.
Thank you.
And the commission will gladly review it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jake Caliendo.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Jack Caliendo. I am the owner of Caliendo Contracting Corp., a local Massbeth-based construction contracting business. Our office is approximately a mile away from 5902 Borden Avenue. I'm here today in support of the self-storage facility special permit application brought by Home Depot. As a small construction company, having enough space is always a concern of ours. We have a need for all different types of building materials, ready for jobs around the city. We also have a need to store tools and equipment, and our office is never large enough. We have like a rental yard of outdoor space, and there's always a concern for high or expensive special custom-ordered materials for projects in the city. And timing of these materials is always a problem. So, I feel that the storage facility would help us, and we could purchase these materials and have a place to store them that is central located in Massbeth near our office. We would solve this issue. We could have materials ready in advance of heading out to the job sites in a secure, clean storage unit instead of stuffing them into limited space in our yard or our office or in our vans. We would have less worries about timing of material and have a longer time to order. I think there are many other contracted businesses that would benefit from the self-storage facility in the same way, since the self-storage uses complements Home Depot stores, which is also proposed on the property. I also think the development would be a hub for local construction industries since it is in a convenient, central location right off the Long Island Expressway. For this reason, I fully support proposed special permit and development of a self-storage facility at the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caliendo. We have a question from Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you for your testimony. Do you currently utilize any kind of self-storage in your business operations?
Sometimes we do. Like I said, for specialty items. For example, if I'm doing a person's custom kitchen in the city or a townhouse, a specialty item for like bathrooms, could be like special faucets, like a special steam shower unit or glass doors, anything that's like of high value, we find that it comes useful to take it and put it into a storage facility.
There are any, could you speak to the frequency with which that's necessary for your business?
It depends on all workload, but it could be once a month, sometimes once every two months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? And thank you, Mr. Caliendo, for your testimony.
Thank you.
I understand that Danny Pyle has now rejoined the meeting, so I would call upon him to testify.
Hello, City Planning Commission?
Yes, Mr. Pyle.
Yes, thanks for having me. As you're aware, my name is Danny Pyle. I am the owner of O'Neals of Massbeth, a family restaurant owned since 1933. All right? It's located at 64-2153rd Drive, and I'm speaking as a longstanding local small-business owner in support of the Home Depot application for Borden Avenue. Self-storage special permit is what they're requesting, and I understand that the Home Depot is seeking the approval for a six-story self-storage facility, including the Home Depot and two new retail buildings. Home Depot will be a major benefit to Massbeth. They will bring in many needed jobs to the neighborhood during this unprecedented times. They will also bring in new shoppers into the area for other businesses, including O'Neals, which is less than a mile away. Additionally, many of O'Neal's customers are small contractors and business owners, and I hear it frequently that they need places to store their equipment, just like the last gentleman who was speaking. So, for these reasons, I'm in favor of the storage facility, and I would like you guys to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle, especially for sticking with us through the technical glitches. Any questions from commissioners? Well, thank you again. Our next speaker will be John Korekis, to be followed by Thomas Gretsch. Mr. Korekis.
Yes, I'm actually with the applicant. I was here for questions only.
Could you explain your role so that the commission might determine whether it would have questions for you?
Sure. I'm with the firm Greenbrook Farrow. We're the architects for Home Depot and this project.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. You're off the hook. Our next speaker is Thomas Gretsch, to be followed by Damian Smith. Mr. Gretsch.
There, I'm unmuted. There you go. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Give me one second. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Gretsch. I am the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. The Queens Chamber of Commerce supports this application for 4902 Borden Avenue, sorry, self-storage special permit. This proposal will facilitate the development of an underutilized M1-1 zone site with a new six-story self-service storage facility. The development will also include a new Home Depot store, two commercial buildings, and ample parking. The two commercial buildings on Maurice Avenue will contain approximately 20,000 square feet of floor area for new retail uses. Most importantly, the proposed development will bring a significant number of new jobs, estimated at approximately 500 to Queens County. This development is consistent with the character of the surrounding area and will boost the local economy at a time when there is a lessening demand for traditional and other uses. Moreover, the Home Depot and self-storage uses complement one another. The location of the self-storage facility adjacent to the Home Depot benefits local contractors, as we've heard before, with a local, convenient location to store tools, construction supplies, and for small businesses to store inventory and equipment. In addition to the new Home Depot store, the two commercial buildings at the site provide opportunities for other complementary local or national retail businesses to thrive at this location. For the above reasons, the Queens Chamber of Commerce fully supports the proposed special permit and requests that it be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Gretsch. We have a question from Commissioner Deloos.
It's actually more of a point. I heard a couple people talk about the 500 jobs, and I just want to make sure that there's a clarification. The 400 to 500 jobs are related to the as-of-right Home Depot, not to the self-storage proposed use. Self-storage, you know, research has shown that it creates more than four or five jobs, generally speaking. And so, I'm wondering, given that clarification, whether the Queens Chamber of Commerce has a different opinion about a use that would protect, a manufacturing use that would produce four or five times more jobs, or perhaps 10 times, depending on what the end manufacturing use would be rather than self-storage?
I understand the question, and I appreciate the comment. We've advocated for self-storage in a selective way in other parts of the borough of Queens, and I feel that this particular one, this project in particular, will yield more than those minimal jobs that I think you mentioned. I have no other further knowledge about exactly how many there may be, but it is a very, very useful opportunity for other small businesses to potentially flourish and by extension, be able to grow their own businesses because they have a place to store prefinished goods and services as well as raw materials.
We have a question from Commissioner Ortiz.
I have a similar question, ask and answer. Thank you.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes. Hi, Tom. Can you speak to what you hear from your members that are involved in construction-related businesses and their demand for self-storage?
Thank you, Commissioner Knight. Happy to respond. So, the last couple of months has been kind of a lull, as we all know, but it looks like there is some pent-up demand for a number of different projects and proposals that are out there. Some of them require rezoning, and some of them are not. But I will tell you that when I first came to the chamber five years ago and being new to the landscape, literally and figuratively, I didn't realize the impact that some of these self-storage facilities can have on the hyper-local economy when it comes to construction services and so on. In fact, there's one in the story that we've advocated in the past. I happen to be there for the grand opening and go back on occasion just to observe, and I do see people, contractors, construction folks, bringing supplies in and out of that facility. Like I said, both raw materials, projects in progress, as well as finished project, because their own real estate is so expensive, they need to have a storage location such as this to store that equipment and their products.
Thank you. Seeing those are the questions, I'll thank you, Mr. Gretsch, for taking the time and testifying, and then move to Damian Smith, who will be followed by Samadi Wadsworth.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I am Damian Smith. I speak today in support of a special permit to allow a new self-storage facility at 5902 Borden Avenue in Massbeth, Queens. I founded First Standard Construction in 2008 after immigrating to the United States from Ireland in 2001. We specialize in all types of construction, from interior and gut renovations to ground-up mixed-use and residential development. We have over 120 employees who work on projects throughout the city. The majority of First Standard's work is in Brooklyn, Queens, and Manhattan, and most of our workforce travels from Queens to the job sites. Like many other firms in the city, we lack the storage space to meet the demands of the various projects we are currently working on and those we are preparing to start. With multiple projects at different stages of completion, storage of materials is a challenge that we deal with every day. This is why I support the new self-storage facility proposed by the Home Depot, which will be conveniently located just off the Long Island Expressway. There are really no other self-storage options in Massbeth or the surrounding area. I anticipate that my company would use the new facility to store larger bulk inventory and orders from Home Depot's professional contracting services, which will be right next door. I am sure that having easy access to self-storage will help my company's projects run more efficiently and cost-effectively. Thank you for letting me speak in support of the special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Questions? And thank you for your testimony. And next up will be Samadi Wadsworth, to be followed by Alison Ruddock.
Wadsworth appears to have fallen off our list, so.
Okay, then we will move directly to Alison Ruddock.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Alison Ruddock with VHB. I'm with the applicant team. VHB prepared the environmental assessment statement as part of the land use application, and so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Ruddock? Okay, you are off the hook, Ms. Ruddock.
All right, thank you.
And we will move on to Alexa Alvarez. While waiting for Ms. Alvarez, I will note that she is the last of the speakers who have signed up. If there is anyone who is interested in testifying, whether by telephone or online, now would be the time to do so. Ryan, if you could once again put up the information about how to register to speak? Okay, while leaving this up on the screen, if we could ask Ms. Alvarez to begin her testimony?
Hi, good afternoon, Chair President. My name is Alexis Alvarez. I'm a union carpenter with the New York City District Carpinteracy, and I am in favor of the rezoning, so meaning that the project will be union. I had mentioned before that I am a member of my union, and I am also a fellow Brooklyn native. And I do believe that good union jobs will give a prevailing wage to prevent job displacement and also lessen the need for government assistance. It's definitely going to make it a reality for workers to be able to achieve economic stability and financial freedom. And, you know, brothers and sisters are already in the grounds, in the community, you know, whether it be charity, community outreach, or, you know, vocational training that we have on behalf of the carpenters, District Council of Carpenters. So, to conclude, I'd like to say that by choosing union, you're choosing safety, time on craftsmanship. So to conclude, I'd like to say that by choosing union, you're choosing safety, time on craftsmanship, and skill. Thank you very much for your time, Chairperson.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see anything, so thank you for sticking around for both of our hearings today, Ms. Alvarez. And Ryan, if I would check back in with you to see if either Ms. Wadsworth or Ms. Ruddock?
No, they have not come back on to the attendee list. We've also pulled the report for registration and have no further registrants signed up.
Okay, so with that, the public hearing on this matter is closed. And Madam Secretary, is there any other business before the commission?
No, Madam Chair, but I'd like to read this statement. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meeting's page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st Floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you for providing that additional information, and with that, I will close this public meeting of the commission and say farewell to my commissioners.
Thank you, Chairpersonago.
Bye.
Bye.